Officials, chief deputies, department directors, division directors, they, they can under title forty-nine exempt from U R S coverage. They do have to um let us know upon their first day of hire in order to exempt. And so we just added that clarifying language in the retirement section. And then under G, not G J, the provisions for elected officials and appointed officers in uh title forty-nine. So if, if a full-time or part-time elected official appointed officer was in the U R S service prior to July one, so if they're in tier one, they're eligible based on minimum earnings. And if they are in tier two, then they are eligible based on if they meet the benefits eligible status. So if they, just like every other employee, if they work twenty hours or more, they're eligible for retirement. So we just added a clarifying language to that in the policy. Um, so U R S kind of made that recommendation and that's under, based on title forty-nine. So those are the changes.
So basically what you're saying is, is you took the recommendations from U R S and you updated them in the Weaver County policy?
Correct.
Can you, without belaboring this too long, what's the advantage of not being uh able to be exempted out of that?
So the advantage for
Is there advantage? There's no
I mean, so if you're in tier two, the only advantage is if, let's say you're an elected official, you can exempt out of the waiting period. So let's say you leave your term early or whatever, the, the vesting period is four years. If you exempt out of that, then you would at least get whatever you put in. You know, if you're not in office for four years. If you're in tier two, if you're in tier one, um you, it, I don't know if there's really this is more of a personal preference of wanting your money to go into a 401K versus a pension.
Got it.
So but tier two, you have that option already. So under tier two, you're really just
Whether or not you, you want a defined benefit plan or a defined contribution plan. The defined benefit is all that's really available to tier one employees unless you fit one of these categories that you can exempt.
Okay.
And it's just whether or not you want to work toward the defined benefit pension through U R S, or if you want that 401K option that's more portable based on the fact that you don't think that you'll be in the system long enough to qualify for. So it's just basically personal preference, kind of depending on what your what your plan is.
Yeah, and we're really talking a few amount of people you're elected
Very, yeah.
Very
Who's out here under tier one is gotta be less than probably fifteen, twenty, ten percent now, isn't it? Have all employees, we don't tier, you said July first, but you didn't give a year.
Twenty eleven.
Okay. So if you were hired hired or elected after twenty eleven, you're in tier two.
Well, unless you were in U R S with another agency prior to that, yeah.
Okay. If there's any questions, commissioners, now would be that time. If no questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I don't think there's approval on it. I don't think there's an action on it.
Because that would have to come before the commission body and it'll be that way.
Yeah.
You got my okay, though.
There you go. But you know what? I feel so good about that. Okay.
Let's speak to that. I gotta go call my accountant.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. He really did need the reminder text, didn't he?
Yeah, this is an oh crap. Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. That was exciting. We'll wait just a moment for Mr. Quinney, Mr. Park and Mr. Wilkins.
So Mr. Quinney texted me and he said, can you cover this item? And it'll be hilarious if he comes back and you guys say, how was your lunch? He went to lunch with uh Miss Justin Rubio, law firm, because he wanted to pick the brains of a what it'd be like to be a private attorney. And like, good luck, you're not gonna find anything better than this.
Okay.
And so he assured me, he's just like, I'm just learning. And I'm like, okay, but ask him how long.
Do you know where he went?
Aroy D.
Aroy D.
Yeah.
Aroy D has died. Okay, I got it.
Yeah, but I was like, good luck finding a, uh, you know, you've got your student loan forgiveness, you've got the assistance with that. You've got wonderful work hours, you've got great people to work with. We had a good laugh about it.
If he comes in, I know all that.
Are you gonna speak in Thai?
I'm talking Thai.
Park's coming over. It's okay, we're having a good time.
Sean's out of town, isn't he?
He's in Minneapolis.
Yeah, I thought so.
Why do you vacation in Minneapolis?
Not a vacation. I don't think you'd be there.
The National Planning Conference.
Oh.
I did not think you'd be vacationing. Listen, we were trying to plan our baseball game for, for this year. Celebrate our anniversary. And when you look at the teams we haven't seen yet, and some of them are, you know, Detroit, like that's like an overnighter. Gonna go see Detroit and never even come home. Like, they're just some teams that don't have attractive cities. Whatever. We're going to Kansas, Kansas City.
Okay.
Or fun.
Barbecue.
Is that what it's there?
Kansas City barbecue.
Okay, good to know, because when I looked it up, it didn't look like there was much going on there.
It's not a bad place out there. They got a temple nearby to get the, they got a lot of cool
Do they have a temple? Oh, maybe we'll have to plan for that.
Not too far north, you can actually, and it's not too far, Sharon.
I'm not gonna
You can go to uh
Two, okay. Here we go. So commissioners, you had asked a little while ago um to look at the possible, possibility of a municipal services district. Now, they currently are not, we're not allowed to do that because it's only eligible for counties of the first class. We're a second-class county.
Can we run legislation? Yeah, I got a guy that does free labor. I wanna use it, I wanna use everything I can there.
Yeah, so the, this is, the purpose of this meeting was to come back. So we've researched it. Um, Quinney has gone back and done some, some reviews to see if this is even an option of a tool that you would like to use. And if so, our next step would be to propose legislation to get it changed so that it could be applicable to counties of the second class.
Yeah, I thought we'd already had that discussion and decided to move forward. I did too.
We wanted to let you know what the differences are between a special service district and a municipal service district, just to identify
Sure.
if there's anything in addition that we can't do already. And there's a few differences. Um, one of them is the number of services. You can actually have up to six services under a municipal service district. They can provide any di- uh type of service that a special district can. You can also have H R financing, budget, I T staffing and services, which you can also have for any other district. So it increases the number of services. They can issue bonds, just like a regular district. You would create it through a county uh commission resolution. And then it would follow a similar process to creating a special district. Uh, the other difference is the, the board, the commission would be the initial board of trustees. And like a special service district where the commission would be the governing board, and then you would appoint an administrative control board. You could either remain the board of this, or you could change it to an appointed or elected board. Um, but other than that, they really are the same as any other district. So those are the two key differences, the increase in number of services, which if you're trying to create like a mini-type city that can provide all of the municipal type services that a county can. And then also the characterization and the co- the composition board.
Uh, one of the just difference I thought was that because a special service district has to get it, go through the vote of the people in order to have taxing authority. Weaver County commissioners could, through agreement and inter-local, share their tax revenue with the municipal services district, so we wouldn't have to go through a vote of the people.
May or shall?
You can, under the inter-local agreement, you can share with any other tax entity, your tax revenue.
May, may, may. So what that means is Weaver County commissioners could say, you know, any sales tax that's allocated to the unincorporated areas, we're going to share that with the municipal service district that's over that unincorporated area. Any property tax that Weaver County collects for unincorporated areas, we're going to give that to the municipal services district in the unincorporated area. So basically you can give them everything, they, they could be at their own cities offering up to six services. You could even let them appoint and elect their own members if you wanted.
Right.
And you would still control them through an inter-local agreement. So it's just another option of you know, do they wanna be their own city? If they wanna be their own city and they vote to be their own city, then, then we're done with them. We don't have to do anything with them. If you want to have a municipal services district that operates like a quasi-city, and it could do any one of up to six services, then that's another option you can do. Special service district's a little more tricky if you want them to be able to raise their own taxes, has to go through a vote of the people. Otherwise, we could keep the taxing authority here with you three. Their boards appointed or elected or whatever would have to come back to you and say, we wanna raise our property taxes. And you have to sign off on that and then raise the taxes, similar to how the nine-one-one district does now. They come back and ask for you for permission to raise taxes and you have to vote to let them raise taxes or not. Be the same thing with this municipal services district. They, so they would still be beholden to the commissioners, but you could set them up so that they kind of govern their own destiny, as long as they're gonna live within their existing budget. Either through an appointed board or an elected board.
Um, the question be, if this is something that the commission wants to quote pursue with the legislature, I'd actually ask you commissioner for what would be the best way to go about contacting someone down there to run the bill. Uh, I'm not quite sure what would be the best avenue for that.
Well, if you'll give me chapter and verse on it, probably just even take a first stab, but it's so basically all we're doing is changing
It would be
Counties of the first class to counties of the second class, right?
Well, we would say, because it says counties of the first class, so we would say first or second.
First or second, yeah.
That was two words or second.
So it's pretty simple. So I think what, as I recall, we won't started this conversation is that we wanted the ability for upper and lower Weaver County to basically be separated for taxes. So we won't go through the finger pointing like we've done the last couple of years about, well, you're taking all our money and
Putting it.
Putting it down there. You know, so, you know, we made an extra million dollars and, which they really didn't, but that's, remember when they claimed there was a million dollar revenue generation that we use somewhere else. So my main objective is to look at the revenue and the expense for those areas. So there's no guesswork, so they can't point fingers and then if you have to raise taxes because of it, or you lower taxes, you have the information to make those decisions.
We do have the ability under title thirty-four to create areas with separate tax levies within the county. So it'd be like a, a separate district, but it would just be like a lowercase D. So, and we do that with uh areas for fees, like up at Powder Mountain, but we could also do it with uh, with taxes. So um, it would be similar to this, but this one would just creates an extra layer of separation, gives them a bit more autonomy and same.
So if it was a special service?
Uh, municipal service.
A municipal, so.
We proposed, I think, three or four years ago, splitting the unincorporated into three or
Free taxing entity.
Yeah, so we did the UNTA areas and under, and then the upper. And then we said, well, no, maybe we'll just divide them in two. And then in the end, we decided not to do that. That's when we did the one hundred percent tax increase
Right.
for the unincorporated, but we lowered it in the general fund for everybody else. Um, so we've had this conversation over the years. Um, the nice thing about a municipal services district or a special service district is it's defined in statute. These other districts are the lower D that we created, like for the Summit Mountain overlay. They're not, I think they were a mistake in the code. I don't think anybody intended to create these districts because they're not defined. There's no
Six.
You know, it was just, we took advantage of, of, of a code.
For Powder Mountain.
Yeah, for Powder Mountain, but there's no defined authority or anything like that. So it would be much better, I think, to use one of these defined districts.
I think regardless, if we change the legislation, all it does is give us an extra option.
Yeah, that's, I don't think it hurts us to change it.
Right.
Yeah, because even if we decide not to do it, it
Then it's still an option.
Yeah, doesn't hurt any.
And we could, so we could do a white paper and say, okay, here's what we get with special service, here's what we get with municipal service. But I think we gotta go ahead and change the statute.
Yeah, is there, you, so we'll work on language, but is there a particular legislator? Or should we just turn it over to the commission to work or send to?
I, I think we'll use Donegan.
You'll use Donegan though, right?
I'll use Donegan. Well, he's chair of political, so that's where it goes. So, or Rev and Taff.
That's you.
Yeah.
And we probably need to get Victor down in St. George. Probably need to get Bob. We need to probably get, you know, get that uh what's her name, Amelia, down in Utah, Jeremy. Get those other class twos on board, so they don't, they're not blindsided.
No, we'll, we'll give them an update, yeah, for sure. But again, it's just, it's a
An option, it's an option.
It's just, which I don't know why anybody would be opposed to it, but I think they actually probably haven't even realized it. So, no, I think we could do that at one of these uh you know, uh, county meetings.
Well, uh, if you're gonna be at USIP on Thursday.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I don't know if Victor will be there, but Bob's usually there.
Bob will be there.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay, well, if you could just give me that and I could, probably ought to start that through interim. And then we can make it, make it a committee bill. Make my job easy.
We'll get you some language. That's gonna be very simple. We'll just verify that that's all we need to add. And maybe we can give some flexibility in how these operate.
Now, if it's gonna make your job easy, I don't want any of that bellyache in the year from now, how you did all this stuff.
Well, I'm not talking about next, I'm just talking on this particular bill.
Okay.
Is that Brandon?
Sure.
Oh. Yeah, if you do that, I think we just, I don't see why anybody'd be opposed to him.
I will. Yeah, yeah, I don't see why. Like Davis County, I don't even think they'd care, they'd have an unincorporated area like that that
No.
they could even do it.
Davis is not gonna have a dog in a fight.
No.
Washington County might, Utah County who probably does a little bit.
A little bit, maybe, because they've got all those, they've got the same thing going on with some of those Santaquins and some of those down in there, you know, it's a little different. Oh, you, Eagle Mountain, uh, uh, Saratoga, that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I think they'd jump right on board on there.
Yeah.
Okay. So Mr. Crocker, we'll leave that in your hands to come up with the, the draft.
They'll do that, get it to me, then we'll get it, I'll get it down to Donegan. First interim and see what we can do.
I don't think it'll be controversial.
No, no. It's a may.
A may, not a shall.
It's a may.
All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion to Sondra for fifteen, unless you wanna move things up. Sheriff's here.
He is here.
I wonder if he's waiting for anybody?
I can bump my head up and check with him.
Yeah, I don't know if his chief's coming.
I'll check with him real quick.
Thank you. Well, we've all got a lot of letters from the Riverdale. Riverdale seniors, half of which are in Riverdale, the other in West Haven and Washington Terrace.
You and West Haven.
Ogden and
They're from all over.
Yeah, well.
It's just the sheriff, he's, sorry, he's here.
It's just him today?
Just him today. So he's ready whenever you want.
Let's uh move him up then. Commissioners, if that's okay.
Okay, well, I know.
So are they looking for money?
Yeah.
For Riverdale?
Yeah.
And what pot of money are they looking for?
Senior fender money.
Well, what, where's it come out of our budget?
I think it's Weaver Human Services. They won't have.
Okay.
Weaver Human Services.
Well, yeah, I didn't think, hello there. Commissioners.
Sheriff Farman.
Hey, I know you. Chris?
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Nice to see you.
I don't usually stress that. Be careful, don't fall over.
Yeah.
Our next line item is a discussion, is a sheriff's office update, our very own highly approved Sheriff Ryan Arman's here to give that to us. I gotta step off for just a second.
We're not ready for you.
My cell just, the wind went out.
He was ready to roll.
There enough wind there.
Wow, well, that's, that's hot air.
Yeah.
I knew you
Well, you're on schedule to one forty-five, you just want to make sure that
Oh, I was told one thirty. I'm sorry.
Well, you're here.
All right. Did you hear that story about Mark Horton?
Uh-uh.
On Huddle?
No.
Oh, you didn't catch that?
I was there.
Oh.
Well, I remember hearing it. About what? Maybe I did.
About Deputy Hawes.
No.
So Deputy Hawes had some training in uh St. Jo- uh, Las Vegas. And uh, the water pump went out on uh, one of our uh trucks uh, that he took down there, that he drove down there.
Uh-huh.
And uh, the, the Ford dealers, all four of them said, can't do it till Tuesday. This was Saturday, I think. This happened Saturday or Sunday. And uh, the twenty-four-seven mechanic hotline or whatever said they can't, won't accept a P card to get this all done. So he called Horton and Horton uh uh, went to the shops because he has that big four fifty, picked up a trailer and drove down there.
Are you kidding me?
Picked him up and he had his wife and daughter with him, loaded up and brought him home.
Really?
Wow.
I mean, he's salaried. He didn't have to do that. Drove clear to Vegas to pick him up.
What, he was in Vegas?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, wow.
I missed, I, it must have been the very first thing they shared, isn't it?
It was uh
That was one minute late.
Yeah.
Well, that's cool. Good for him.
Yeah, guard sent me a te- or called me and said, hey, just so you know, I, Horton's doing this and I and, and I was being funny, because if you guys know him, he's just uh, he just gets stuff done. And Horton, in his story, said that uh, he was twenty minutes outside of Vegas when he thought, oh, I better call the chief and let him know what I'm doing. And I said, you did that on purpose because you know that we probably would have said no, and no way to get out of it. We laughed, but I'm sure we would have said go ahead, just because
I'll bet you would have. Well, he did it on his own time, didn't he?
He's salaried.
Salaried, so.
Yeah.
No big deal.
Yeah, yeah, just, that's kind of the way Mark is. He just gets stuff done.
We had, did he have a uh, car hauler? He took
Yeah, he went to the shops and picked up their trailer for vehicles and hooked it to his F four fifty that he has for search and rescue.
Right.
Went and got him. So you think about the repairs and the tow fees and all that, it'd probably been a wash anyway if we had to pay him.
Yeah. Well, that's great. Horton's a good dude. Pretty good dude.
He's a rare breed.
Oh. So what kind of an update do you have for us today? Are we looking at something?
We're not looking at anything. I waited for you. Meaning I just figured I didn't wanna repeat.
Rinse and repeat like that?
Yeah, I don't do that anymore.
No.
It's not up top anymore, so. All right, well, should I just, be okay if I go ahead?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um vacancies, sheriff's office. Most law enforcement agencies, especially around our size, same size and even larger, still struggle, struggle, but we have um if so we have a term called what's on paper and then what's actually working. So on paper means they're in from the point that they were hired, going through the training. But if all those that are um on paper successfully make the process, we're only down to an enforcement.
Wow.
And if everybody uh, in corrections, we're only down eleven, which is good, because we used to be down altogether, it just in corrections, forty-one, about a year ago.
Forty-one?
Thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, yeah. And this academy, you guys remember the contract that we sent you, we paid for fifteen upfront. And then whatever over that is no charge, we actually got nineteen going.
Great.
So there's some savings there, if you wanna look at it that way.
Good. I'll say, okay.
Great. But we were large enough for people, uh, we still have a lot of people that are twenty years and more that can retire anytime. All right.
Now, hold on, I wanna dig on that statement right there. They can retire anytime and there's a window by which they do that, correct? They can retire at any time. But did we give them a window by which it's most advantageous for them to do so?
When you say give them a window, what does that mean?
Well, you know, we did that retirement program years ago and it was more successful than we'd hoped.
Yes, it was too success, too successful. It was five years for some of those.
So, okay.
In, in that window of the six or nine months. So we're, we're, we're probably approaching that five-year here and it probably, I think we got another year left.
Okay, got it.
But that was just for that group.
Okay.
Um, but uh, then there was a new law created, I think that window goes down to ninety days that people can come back to work now. I'm not sure on that. The retired law enforcement used to be
Six months.
Yeah, six months or a year, I think.
It started out being a year, but I thought law enforcement was six.
I think it's even, I think it's even more than that now. I think uh, my lot, I didn't write notes, but I think it was down to ninety days. But the caveat to that is they have to give up twenty percent of their retirement.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I think so, yeah. Okay, next item. Um, in meeting uh, with uh Fisher Four a couple of weeks ago, he said to keep uh prized on jail capacity. So this is from Chief Reese, I'll just read it. Uh, the weekend of March twenty-third, we were near capacity. The weekend of March thirty, we reached capacity. Uh, but staff were able to jostle inmates and new arrests and able to squeeze everyone in until court releases on Tuesday and Wednesday. Weekend of April sixth, we reached capacity and had eight people that we could not put in jail cells.
What day? That was April?
At the weekend, April sixth.
Weekend.
Um, that remained, they all remained in booking the entire weekend because we had no bed space. Eventually, these individuals were either released, bonded or, or moved into an appropriate housing bed after other inmates were released. And then he makes a funny crack to me, Tetris resumes. All right, um, I know we're in a holding period about the, the jail build decision. Um, just one thing that uh, talking with the engineers, that, that, you know, the longer we put off the decision on building the, the downscales version of what I commented as Plan B at the convention, we're still looking at two years to have it completed. So where we're at capacity, um, please consider that in your waiting, because you, we keep waiting, it's gonna be two years from today. If we dug today, we still gotta get permits. So we could be two and a half years and, and where we're hitting capacity and still a little bit on staffing, that's gonna put us in a position where we stop with the marshal inmates. When we do marshal inmates, it brings a hundred marshal inmates right now bring in two point nine million a year. Or we used to have two hundred and fifty of them, which was closer to seven million, seven and a half. So so when we look at the numbers and say, the sheriff's office keeps costing us more, and if we look at the inmates, we lose the inmates, the marshals for our own, we're gonna have less income to balance that. So we, we're getting to a point where we're gonna be canceling marshals. So just FYI.
Not entirely, just you're dense, you're taking them all on.
Uh, well, so
Too bad we couldn't have taken that concrete off of those Pillsbury Towers. If we're in elevators and
Yeah, bring them in.
They're naked, we located it.
So, and, and I say this just as a, a reminder, not that you necessarily forgot, but uh, people often get confused when they hear, well, you have eight hundred and eighty-eight beds out there. But you're, you say you only have seven hundred and fifty. So the term capacity is relative.
Right.
Because as in a, you imagine a, a piece of pie, our pods are shaped like, in essence, pie slices. Because as in uh, you imagine a a piece of pie, our pods are shaped like, in essence, pie slices. And the one facility, for example, has multiple sections with, that'll hold thirty-two people. But because of the mental health problem, we can only put one person each cell, so capacity in that section can be sixteen. And that's where we're, we're losing it. So. Anyway. And then back to the uh marshals is we might just call the marshals up and say you need to take fifty. Because we can't have them and then we'll reduce that amount, that'll free up some space for the locals. But then that also cuts out million and a half per year if we do fifty roughly.
Sheriff, what's the, if you were to do that and and reflex the marshals, you know, between this number and this number? How quick is that? Like if you said, hey, you gotta take fifty?
The marshals will take three hundred beds today.
It would be today.
If we had.
Today or do you take him in a month?
We'll call them up and they'll start phasing them out over the next week or two.
So like weeks. What about bringing them back? Drops and we can take more within weeks?
Yes, but usually when you cut down, when you go back and forth. It's like moving from house to house. You wanna stay there for a while, right? So then we start creating relationship issues. You know, they want something to depend on. Right now, they can depend on a hundred. But once we go down to fifty, they pretty much know that fifty's gonna be a long haul and eventually it's gonna go zero. So.
Okay.
So the balance, so I get, I get that that question asked a lot is, and and this is where I've worked with Park on the number. So like right now in our jail, there's a a fixed number of employees. We're paying that no matter what. But if the capacity of inmates goes down, our locals, and then we go up in the federal money, that's a real benefit, right? But if we build a whole new facility where there's the cost to build it, like let's just say our own pod, give it to the marshals, well, we gotta hire additional employees, so there's really not a cost benefit. But what we have now, where everything's paid off, there's an advantage to have those inmates. For example, if we could get the staffing a little higher, we could open up Kiesel and put in a whole lot more. If we renovate Kiesel, we can put, you know, two hundred and sixty in there, two seventy-ish. So that's where we're at. So the urgency of the jail increases uh weekly for us. So. Questions on that?
None for me. No, makes sense.
Okay, all right, uh the animal shelter, um uh I I mentioned this to Commissioner Bolos last week and it's time that the sheriff's office moves away from the animal shelter. Um it gets going really good and then either they they have a staffing issue or there's some issues in there. Chad's been out on leave and we have to send one or two. We got a lieutenant over there full-time now. Before that, Captain Bags was over there full-time. We need these resources at the jail because of the increase of the demand that we're having with the capacity issues, the overfilling, we need staff. And so I'm respectfully asking for us not to be involved with the animal shelter July one. We do, we need the staffing.
So what happened to Chad?
Uh, he had surgery with his shoulder.
Then he'll be back.
He's back now.
Okay.
Yes, it's in a good place right now.
But if.
It's the use of the sworn officers, I think, is what's the issue, right? These are, these are deputies that could be working at the jail.
That's exactly what it is. But if Chad, if Chad was to be there all the time and if if the staffing stays up there, it's not an issue. But every time something happens, we have to, we don't have to, but we put good people over there that know what they're doing. But if you want to look at terms of dollars, it's not a good accounting, it's not good practice for putting that kind of a resource over at the 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 animal shelter.
Well, I don't disagree with that.
And so I think Chad could can successfully do it on his own if he has the support and resources, but I need it over at the jail. I think you guys know that. So July one, we are tentatively planning to just be done with the animal shelter. But it's not an ultimatum. But I'm kinda saying, we need help, but it doesn't. I'm being honest. It sounds like one. But it's, the animal shelter really should not be in the business of the sheriff's office.
Well, we had that discussion two years ago.
We've had it multiple times, but one thing I don't get, and I'm not saying it's you, I'm not saying it's anybody else, but we don't get a definitive answer. We get, yeah, it should be, it should be a district, it should be something, but I'm to a point where we need more staffing. At sheriff's office, you guys know that. And we're getting better at it, but these are uh, these are command staff level that are helping.
I think when we looked at this previously, we couldn't find any legal requirement that would have this be mandated to be under the sheriff's. It could go under multiple departments.
Well, is there a legal requirement for the twenty-two to off with this service or is it something that can be run by a nonprofit? Is it? I mean, you talked about a special service district because are other shelters run by nonprofits? Do you know?
The big one in uh Canavas, all nonprofits.
I just think.
So I interject something, Commissioner. So in the conversations I've had about the animal shelter, and Chris, this is where you need to follow up on this, but with Park in here in the past, the reason why the county is keeping it is because of the bond or the loan that we have on the the brick and mortar of it. That's, to me, I've heard, has been the the hit, the hiccup with not moving into another direction.
That's why we didn't take it to a nonprofit status or.
Or something.
The the bond does have, I don't forget exactly, but yeah, it has an issue.
And I don't know if there's a work around that, but really, it it it's self-sufficient. The sheriff's office does not need to be there. Chad's very competent. He's done what it used to be before we got here. And we had those troubles with that. You guys came out. I know Commissioner Harvey came out then and we had a press thing. Chad came in, he's done some really good things. Staffing level seemed to be doing good. There's some remodeling going out there. But it's just, I hate, I need those staff at my office, the jail.
I don't have an, I don't have an answer right now on that.
And I'm asking for discussion primarily. But I don't, it's, it does sound like an ultimatum, but.
We thought about expanding the animal shelter uh and removing.
As long as it includes two hundred beds for it, for humans, I'll support it.
Let me, let me just, let me finish. We thought about if 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 a plan ever is in place for the fairgrounds to be privatized, that either has to be carved out or that animal shelter would have to be relocated. And years ago, before you were elected, it they talked about relocating it actually in the area where you were training center was built. Up there towards the the front of that.
Interesting.
Complex. Or in the back where the log strip is, where now you're thinking about going out and adding the pods. But it never, it was always gonna be under the sheriff's office.
Does it come from another department?
Thompson.
When the, when the animal shelter was first built, it was still under the fairgrounds because it was at the fairgrounds. I was actually the director first. A year maybe. And uh we had, there was so, back then, the frequency of help needed from someone who had legal authority to exercise the law was that it was so frequent that uh it was decided by this body to move it from the Golden Spike underneath the sheriff. And uh it hadn't looked back since. And boy, that's been a long time.
It's been a while.
Long before phase two of that shelter was built. So, uh.
So. Can I add to that? So I was informed, and and again, this is from Thompson, that there was a a compromise or a deal that was made because uh there was more frequency with um the uh animal control portion of it, where it made sense that a legal entity with justice, with laws and rights and so forth would be a good oversight of that. But we would do that anyway with or without us being under us. I mean, if they called us, like any other, like you got animal shelters all over the place. If they need help from the cops, they'd call them out, depending their jurisdiction.
What was happening with us, with all due respect and sorry to interrupt? When that was the case, the priority was way down the list and sometimes the response was uh oftentimes the response was very late or not at all. Because you have to, you have to prioritize. It's one of the things you have to do all the time. And I I get that, but that complaint went away from what I understand uh when it came under the sheriff's office.
And also that time, they had a lieutenant that was um Chad's spot too.
Yeah, well, who was, who was?
There used to be Chad Farren, there used to be some others that would go up and and they were a director, if you will, over it.
That's true.
But we brought Chad on because of that need and and it was a discussion of that, well, Chad gets going, gets up and running, we can keep relooking at it. And Chad has proved very well, he's capable.
Yeah, I think Chad's amazing out there. He's done, taken.
He has.
Taken it forward. Yep. Well, Commissioners, this will be whether or not you wanted to create another department or if you were to place it under an existing department. Currently, it's placed under an existing department, the sheriff's department. And where would it be placed under, you know, how that would go? Because if there's ever a shortfall with staffing again, well, you know what goes on there. Currently, the sheriff through, and I don't know how it works, but you you do interlocal agreements with cities similar to like you do your contract cities.
It's through the animal shelter. It's not the sheriff's office per se. My understanding, we just manage it. That's, that's all we do. We just make sure there's a concern, we'll go in there and help out, but.
Isn't, isn't there four cities that participate, four or five cities?
Oh, there's more than that now. Yeah, there's a board and they meet quarterly. And uh I mean, they're, they're set up to function on their own. They really are, as it.
I wonder if you create it as an interlocal entity, like just its own separate legal entity with all of the participating cities and, you know, county participates.
It's an enterprise right now.
It's an enterprise.
Yeah, I mean, they, they're self-sufficient. I mean, the only time the county steps in is, you know, those gaps in period where there's money, but it, they're self-sufficient.
Chris, do you mean a taxing entity or just a separate entity?
You could do it either way.
But if it's a taxing entity, then it has to be passed by the voters.
I'd have to check to see if uh that would be the case or if you have taxing entities that, you know, participate. Like the health department is a taxing entity, but that's created by statute. I'd really have to. To see what the powers of that would be. But the, I look at the code, do we have to provide it? It just says animal services under the municipal code. That could just be enforcement. It doesn't necessarily mean a shelter, but I do know the cities do like it, so.
Well, another thing too is, with all due respect, I think we need to make it an item of action, not just discussion. But seventy-five days is pretty short, Sheriff.
Seventy-five days for what?
That's July first.
I can make it sixty-five days.
If that helps you.
I, 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 I think that the date is more the, more of a
Discussion.
A discussion. We need help out there.
I think it's to start the ball rolling.
Well, it's gonna impact the budget too, because if we move it from the sheriff's office for the purpose of using deputies in jail, we have to fund a position there. You know what I mean? We have to fund a.
Where do we get that money to fund the position from?
Right now, the sheriff's office is paying for our lieutenant to be over there.
And so if they take the lieutenant to the jail, it's just gonna fill an empty position. It's not gonna free up any money. You know what I'm saying?
No, I get it. Yeah, it's true. But again, when the public asks, why are you having a lieutenant over at the jail, at the animal shelter? Should we be charging the enterprise for that deputy too, is another question.
Probably.
Yeah.
Probably.
Part of the big experience. Providing a service, it requires the lieutenant to provide the service, that's part of the operation.
It's interesting too because our insurance costs for law enforcement is significantly higher than regular employees and probably some additional costs.
For sure.
Putting those resources over there.
For sure.
Well, we should probably open up that discussion again. But uh if you're covering it now out of your budget, couldn't we reduce your budget by that amount and use that, use that money to fund that?
No. It's an enforcement position, right?
Just trying to think, how are we gonna get the money?
The enterprise.
Why can't we do it?
The enterprise.
Why isn't the enterprise?
In actuality, the enterprise.
Should.
Yes.
It actually should be reimbursing the sheriff's office.
Exactly.
That's right.
Exactly. I don't see why not. Because the enterprise fund is is paying for the operation of the building, right? And that's part of it.
And then because it's under us, we feel obligated to make sure it's running properly.
I think that's the direction we need to go. Scott Park in here. We need to have more discussion on this. Well, really, no different than the transfer station.
Nope.
No.
Same thing.
We tried.
Same thing.
The cities pay a certain amount for operations, so much for, you know, low digs to pay. It should be the same for these cities that are involved with that uh facility.
That's the way.
You know, it's a little, it gets a little complicated because some of the cities have their own, they have their own shelters, but we still end up getting involved to a certain extent.
Only South Ogden. The rest of them don't and and, but I think all of them are under the enforcement uh contract. I think all the cities are.
No.
South Ogden.
South Ogden's not.
They do their own enforcement.
But you, you know what? That, that makes sense to me. It should be funded through the enterprise fund.
Yeah.
And, eh eh, but I still think even if we, even if we straighten that out, we have to look at the sheriff wanting that, that individual, that sworn officer back. They're short in the jail. They need that position in the jail. They should be able to keep the position and and fill it. And then you, you, you hire a civilian as a director.
Well, are you gonna, would you take Chad back? You wouldn't take Chad?
No, no, no. Chad's, Chad's with.
That's, I wanted to be.
Oh, you're talking about.
No, we have a lieutenant that's over there, Fred Jackson. Jackson just stays with us. We're already paying for that. It just.
It needs to be a sort of an operation.
Yep, like the transfer station.
Yeah, you can't pull somebody though. I I can tell you, you can't pull somebody from the Vance at the Golden Spike or the, or the conference or something to run that out there. No, that's not the.
Can I add something to that? Nobody needs to be added anywhere to the animal shelter. They have all their positions. It's under us, so when we see problems, we step in to fix it because someone's gone or whatever else.
So it's under another department and then they need additional help, it would come from.
Yes.
Or whoever, wherever it ends up.
But that's, it's rare, more rare and more rare. It's just that Chad's gone through some surgeries and some other issues. They've had some staffing shortages where we've helped fill in because until they get employees, just like any other agency. But when we send somebody over, we don't, it's, it's, it's better to pull from a a lieutenant level. But it's becoming, because they have the ability to make the decisions, they either familiar with it, they got all this training and expertise. We could send a wine level staff, but when Chad's not there, somebody needs to make decisions. And so that's why we do that.
They just need somebody to call.
That's all they need.
No different than we see at the transfer station. They've got two people that don't show up for work. They call Sean or Bill and they relocate property management or whoever, you know. Are they, are they on your radio network? There's something to do with radios and animals.
Yeah, it's all covered. Yeah, they, they, they work with.
So they still be able to use your.
Nothing. In my opinion, nothing, no operation changes as far as positions there, no new money. What we're doing is saying someone, someone of a a mid-level management can just be the supervisor to make sure Chad is uh doing what he's supposed to do and they have the resources they need, which again, all the money comes from enterprise. There should be no additional money. There should be no additional money spent. It's just time we're trying to reallocate.
And if there is additional money, then the cities need to.
Yes.
Buck up for it. So, but I, yeah, I agree with you. We shouldn't have to take one of your. You know, officers and put them, it's really a civilian position. There's no, I mean, there's no reason you need law enforcement at the shelter right there, right?
No, but, but when the, so you have the shelter, then you have the control.
Right.
There's two separate functions. We're always like, like if, if they're in another agency. Like helping whatever, uh, city and they need police help, that police department will step in, right? That's just.
So, Chris, do you know this answer? Maybe it's a Scott Park.
He's on his way over right now.
Good. I wanna hold. I've got a couple of questions as it relates to.
While we're holding, I can go to another fun subject.
All right.
Uh, last week I was out of town in, in Mexico and. And enjoying hundred and eight degree weather and ninety percent humidity. It was horrible on my hair.
Was it frizzy?
Yes, it was unmanageable. So anyway, uh, while I was gone, um. Lieutenant Horton, Captain Ryan and Sergeant Slater went to the Border Sheriff's Conference in San Antonio or, uh, El Paso. And they've got some great information on border problems. Myself, Chief Guard and a few other staff are going to Arizona in two, less than two weeks now. Uh, for a border terminated conference on human trafficking. And, uh, Detective Stewart, who's part of our, uh, PR team. Is taking all of his camera equipment and we're gonna do some really cool stuff. Get some information, cause I'm getting a lot of calls about the border and how it's affecting Utah and we are directly impacted. Uh, and while they were in El Paso, uh, the border, US Border Customs did a two-hour presentation. And they are relocating illegal aliens to the Utah. In a memo that we received from Jess Anderson, uh, ending March, week of March. Third or tenth or something like that, three hundred people were sent to Utah. With no information on address or anything. And so a hundred of them were, um, from Venezuela. And so in the month of December, there was three hundred thousand that came over the border total, just in that month. And, um, since, uh, what's going on in Texas, the migration has pushed towards New Mexico and Arizona. Where they are just getting stumbled. Some of the stories that were shared with me is, is that the cartels, the one that controls. The migrants that are coming over, uh, and they pay him and, and we're seeing a, uh, most of them in Arizona are coming from the country of New Guinea. And they say the only reason we're not being overrun by Chinese is because of the separation of the water and their access to get over here. And some of the stories that we're hearing is when children come across the border, they have phone numbers on their forearms. And so they're not coming with their families, or if they are, and they come over and they say, uh. They, the girl usually doesn't speak Spanish or knows limited, so they call the number and they say, hey, who is this? Oh yeah, we know that girl, and they don't. They're just passing them off and they, a lot of times end up, sometimes with family, sometimes it's human trafficking. And in one story, uh, near, uh, Tucson. Or El Paso, I can't remember which one, but the cartel will put ladders, those thirty-foot ladders up top of the fence. And they'll take families or whatever to the border and they'll start going up and the cartel will follow them to the top. They don't know what's on the other side, so the cartel will push. Person thirty feet. They know it creates a medical call, so the resources from the, uh, go to that call. And then they go around the outside to come into the United States. So we're gonna go down there and get it firsthand and see how it impacts Utah and Weaver County. There are Venezuelan gangs in Utah. So that's what we're doing. So we're putting together a, uh, open house sheriff's office when we get back, when the video is done. Stuart may be reaching out to you for assistance, putting it together, just heads up.
These things, you know, like what the. The, uh, required. Leader for schools, the required. Uh, uh. And a, a higher level, uh, officer, if you would, for schools. Uh, this kind of stuff. It all costs more and more and more money. Beyond the ability for us to collect where we are and we can keep taxing our local people to death. But that. It's not the right answer. And I don't know what the one is. Let me just go back. I wanna change the discussion for a moment and go back to. I'm gonna go back to animal shelters. Scott, I know we're not statutorily, this is Mr. Park, we know we're not statutorily obligated to provide a transfer station, yet we do it. We provide it so the cities have a place to take their. Their, their municipal waste. So it's a, a may, not a, a may, not a shell. Uh, what about animal services? Is that also a may, not a shell?
As to the statute, as to whether we're required.
It's just one that listed in the municipal services, it says animal services.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if there's any requirement that we do it now. We did issue a bond and we got all the different cities to participate. It's been, uh, how many? Twenty ten, I think is when we issued the bond initially. Um, so we still have several years left to pay on that. Where we basically committed for the life of that bond to provide an animal shelter. Um, and charge the cities their proportion to share. We have set up the animal shelter as an enterprise fund. It's its own separate, it's the second enterprise fund that we have, transfer station and, and animal shelter. And so, um, it's supposed to cover its costs. We do its primary source of revenues, fees to the different cities that participate, including the unincorporated area, which is treated as a city. Um, and so that's how it's funded. Uh, any capital repairs, anything like that, it's gotta come up with in its own fund balance. There's no general fund appropriation to the animal shelter. Uh, and we also run animal control out of the animal shelter, but that's a little bit different because not. All the cities are participating in the animal shelter. Not all of them are participating in animal control.
How many are?
I don't know the exact number of them right now. And we know, I know there's several cities that don't want to participate in the animal shelter, then they, they sign and they, they have to pay the bond payment anyway, whether they just pay it off.
Yeah.
Part of that.
So they're, until that bond is paid off, they can't get out.
When's that bond?
Uh, it was twenty-year bond, so it should be done, uh.
Thirty.
Excuse me, thirty-year.
Thirty.
Twenty thirty, yes. Twenty-year bond.
Are you sure?
Yes, cause of sales tax.
Yeah.
We could have paid it off a little while ago. In fact, we looked at paying it off. We only own like two and a half million dollars left on it.
But all it did is benefit the cities.
Yeah, so we chose not to use, cause we could have refinanced it. It, it's a reasonable interest rate, so we did refinance it to help save some money, but. Yeah, there's, I mean, it's not a huge amount. I mean, two and a half million dollars is a lot of money, but it's not like a twenty million dollar.
It doesn't help us at all.
It doesn't. If we pay it off early.
Yeah.
I mean, very nice of us to be nice, generous to the cities, but we're left, you know, it's not our responsibility for all the cities to pay for their animal shelter.
When the deputy goes over there to work at the animal shelter, does the enterprise fund pay for that deputy's salary?
So we do an allocation between, um, the animal shelter and also between the jail and enforcement. So that's something that I get from Julie. But I don't know if all the time, like, when they go over, if we're billing every single hour and they go over and work on that, I suspect we're not. But we do have an allocation that's helped to cover some of that.
So you are getting some. We don't know though, if it's for the direct from like our lieutenants that go over.
I don't believe we bill the direct costs, you know. So it's basically Chad on down. Plus the equipment costs and all that sort of stuff is what the animal shelter is supporting. But if, if you guys are spending a ton of time over there with lieutenants. And we're not billing that, then that means the county is paying that instead of the cities that are getting the benefit.
So essentially what you're saying, that if it was under another department. We, we'd have, we have cheaper people covering it. That's, that's the bottom line, right? When, when there's a need, there'd be less expensive employees filling in that need.
Sheriff, that's correct. And the sheriff's asking it to have the animal services removed from out from underneath the sheriff's office. Be its own entity or report to something else like a Sean Wilkinson or a Culture Parks or something like that.
I don't think, I mean, since we're not charging your direct cost as just that allocation. It, it, it actually won't save any money. I mean, you'll free up some resources of the sheriff's office staff, so. Like dollars, it won't save dollars. It'll free up resources so he can now direct his people to go do different services.
Right.
But the same number of dollars will be leaving the county.
That's the whole point of the conversation.
Yeah. So, and we've had this conversation several times over the years. Where is the best place for it to land? I don't, I don't know. Is it, is it Sean Wilkinson? Is it? Todd Ferrario? I, I mean, I'm just throwing names out there. I, I don't know where the best place for it to go is, but administratively, if you choose to move it. It's already its own enterprise fund, so we would just say it's the first of the year, whatever date we choose to move it.
July one.
Put it.
It's not an ultimatum.
It's not.
But, sure. So wherever you guys wanna move it or under whoever, we would just need a little bit of time to work on the approval process, you know, to change the accounting system. What transactions go to who for approval, but it wouldn't be.
So it's not a huge deal.
It's not that big of a.
Though, the big deal is that the sheriff, when, when the shelter needs additional assistance. Now he's not on the hook anymore for sending people from the jail who he needs at the jail. That's really what we're talking about, right?
Yeah. Well, the point is.
It would be somebody from Culture Parks and Rec or somebody from.
Community services.
Community services.
Or if you have the resources.
But it should be a direct expense. And it, and if Weaver County's picking up dollars that should go to the cities to pay, and it comes out of our budget.
Sheriff's budget.
So we, we need to make sure that any of, if we take somebody from. Parks and Rec or whatever, that it's a direct billing. We just need to make sure the accounting's set.
And I guess, I guess it just depends on how tedious you wanna be, right? If somebody goes and fills in for four hours in a month, you're not gonna bill that. But if somebody's there on a consistent basis or, or, I mean, it depends on how.
Yeah, it just depends on where it lands. The enterprise fund should cover its own costs. That's.
It'd be nice to have to fill somebody in.
Yeah.
How deep do you, how, how, how miniscule are those costs for you to chase them? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, there's always like, like Joe will lend a piece of equipment to Parks and Rec or the other way around, you know, and if, as long as it's just a de minimis is what we call it, you know. It's small enough not to track, we don't worry about it. So if it's a de minimis amount of time, you know, somebody goes over an hour to cover a lunch shift.
Right.
Okay, but if somebody's over there four hours a week, every week for the whole year, that's not de minimis anymore.
Yeah, makes sense.
So I, I, I'm sure this is an unfavorable comment, but could, could Chad be under one of the commissioners? Correct reports.
Thank you. So.
Are you saying then we'd go help if they need help?
Yeah, no, you. Well, I know, but I, I just putting it out there as a thought, not as an ask. Yeah, I'm not advocating it. Five or six years.
Administrative, I mean, that's a policy decision. Wherever you guys want it to go, you just tell me where you want it to go and then we'll make the change on whatever date we decide to flip the switch. And, and it'll be its own standalone. So I don't have any reason to keep it at the sheriff's office and I don't have any reason to move it anywhere else. That's, that's just a policy.
Yeah.
Mine comes.
Not, it's not a huge political issue.
No, because it's set apart as its own separate administrative unit, it's really easy to move from one. If you tell me that it's Sean, then.
Yeah, just, just something to think about that we've noticed. That when the animal shelter gets some negative, uh, publicity. First thing that's always said, well, it's under the sheriff's office. Right? And we, we, we get enough as it is, you know, and, 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 and the problem with that is, is that doesn't fix the problem. It diverts the attention and that should not be. This is why I think. The animal shelter could just step up a little bit and it, and, you know, and even if, uh, to, to become their own entity. This would take a lot off everybody's plate in the county.
Let's go back to that question, Chris, is the county required to is they shall, uh, they shall.
Animal services. They said animal services.
So we wouldn't even necessarily have to have one. I don't know what they.
Other than the bond.
I don't know why the bond is a holdup. If, if you've got a nonprofit to come and run the shelter, why couldn't you transfer?
We could.
We could just.
I mean, the bond should not be an issue.
And maybe that's the direction we go, is you get something like, what is it called? The Friends? What's that outfit down there? It's a.
In Can-Am?
Yeah, that, that does, Arlen works there for the county commissioner in Salt Lake or the county council. Arlen. Animal, uh, sanction, they, they do a phenomenon, they're nationally recognized.
Well, if you remember, we actually reached out to them. They're being funded by a national organization that now, no longer, we asked them if they'd come in and fund ours. They said the funds have dried up, so. I mean, if you can find a nonprofit, but.
Best friends?
Yes, best friends. But, but, but there's no funding, but they don't need any funding. They're their own enterprise.
Well.
But they're saying if we turn it over to nonprofit, the enter- enterprise goes away.
They would still collect the money from those cities that are participating, right?
Well, can.
So we could do two things. We could contract out the management of the animal shelter, so it's still an enterprise fund of the county, but we don't have any of the employees, it's just a contract.
Yeah.
Would, just like we could contract out the transfer station, we'd still own the buildings and still own the ground, but we wouldn't do anything beyond own it.
Right.
So we could do that, um, or we could sell the building and the land to somebody else. You know, or give it to them or donate it to them, whatever you wanted to do. So there's lots of options.
Yeah, I think if you're gonna do the nonprofit, you talked about management and then we still have the enterprise. System in place for funding and then the nonprofit takes care of management.
They'll come back to us for capital improvement.
Which, they will, yeah.
Which you would have then hopefully pass on to the cities or get all the cities to agree.
Well, it's okay with the shelter initially, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And I can see cities dropping off of that as soon as they're able to. I can see several cities.
Then the service is no longer there.
Yeah.
If they don't want it, then why are we providing it?
Yeah.
Exactly. The thing is, if they have a stray dog or a cat and they're not doing it, then it's, we're not taking it.
So what happens when somebody shows up there with the dog or a cat to drop off or they just leave it there? They're not gonna say, yeah, I'm from West Haven, you're not, they're gonna take it. So we're stuck with a problem.
Well, if they.
One or the other.
Everybody bells out, that place would make a nice receiving center.
Yeah, it would.
Would. It's got plenty of space. Set up for it.
Fact of the matter is, is if we do end up moving the property, if we end up selling the property that sits underneath it to a. Boyer or some other outfit, uh, whoever it is for commercial development, that would need to be rebuilt, relocated.
It's on the cities.
If we stayed in the service.
If we stayed in the.
Right, and if we don't, then.
What if we contracted, look, I think there's another idea. You know, we contracted, we had the only legs or, uh. The lantern house for years and all these other counties contracted with us. Why don't we just contract Davis County and take all our animals to them?
You are officially wearing a cape right now. Thank you for that idea.
That would be really good.
Is that gonna happen?
Yeah.
Well.
It's a long drive.
That's a long drive.
It's a long ride.
If it's contracted out, cause we're gonna have to address this problem to what I just explained. Sooner than later, or one commission body will end up doing it sooner than later. This is, this is actually probably fortuitous. He's brought this here because it gives us a little time to go over. That's what it gets right down to it. We're gonna have to address this problem.
Well, and if we're looking to move the animal shelter building in the next few years, we've got a lot of capital. Equipment, capital improvements that we're doing towards it, so we would want to consider whether it's worth the investment.
Exactly.
We're gonna have a five-year payback, it's not gonna make sense.
True.
Do you have a friend in Davis County that you could call to see if they'll take?
I have lots of friends.
It's under a commissioner, it's under Randy Elliott, and I know they're just close with Randy.
All Randy and say, hey.
Waterboard with him.
Yeah. I can't see them wanting to take it for anywhere.
No.
Well, then, so how do you keep this, if we offload it to Davis, how do you keep the cities on the hook? Because every city's gonna bail and then it becomes back to our problem.
Well.
Why? Not if we don't have a shelter? Not if it's a review.
They'll have to contract with, they'll have to contract with Davis County.
I also, I also wanna think about contracting the management of it.
I like that idea too.
Because if we did that and we kept the building and we kept the, the bond and, you know what I mean?
I'm just saying politically, you're not gonna, like, transfer to Davis. When somebody shows up with their dog, they're not, they're gonna say. You, you're making us go to Davis County? That doesn't, uh, doesn't play well in the press.
Unless the alternative is for them to increase their taxes so we can fund it.
Yeah, well, that's.
Well, it's exactly what homeless do. You're making us, oh, my kids.
Listen, I think we should explore contracting the ser- the management.
We could have Jason put out an RFP and just get some proposals, yep, to see what we'll take.
We're actually looking at that.
And if they need help or they're short, that's on that.
I like, that's another. I like, that's another enterprise.
Whatever this entity is, eh.
What's, you know, Captain Kirk in Enterprise, I, I think.
You know, there's, there's other costs that we, we haven't discussed yet, but I know that they're there, but look at the time and effort that Scott and his group have to spend on the animal shelter. Right? I've got a chief that supervises the animal shelter and a lieutenant that goes over there.
Hold on.
There's other costs that are involved here.
You know, you contract out with your medical.
Yes, we do. I don't know if they do animals though, but I can ask.
No, no. Now, we're just exploring here.
But yeah.
Contracted out with the, if you contracted out with animal services as well. And all you do is you manage it like you do the medical. That's another option. I like that.
If it was a contract, would you care if it stayed under your department, your office?
As long as we don't have to touch it. We'll come in when it's needed. Right now, it's just a drain right now. We've got to.
No, 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 I understand. Makes sense. And that's why he just.
I don't think they do people.
We say the thing gets paid off in twenty thirty. That's about the time. That's about the time that all this is gonna come to an, ahead. So we're looking something for a six year Band-Aid, something that'll fix it, including Davis County. I mean, if, we ought to be able to, if we're taking in their homeless, they ought to be able to take our homeless dogs.
Well, you'd take for that, yeah.
And then when they have a shelter, we'll have to revisit that.
But keep in mind, they just got fifteen million for a new homeless place down there, so.
Hey, let's explore all the options.
Yeah.
Let's do an RFP. Let's talk to Davis County.
Yeah.
Let's see where we're at.
I can reach out to Jason today and just ask him if he could start gathering something for an RFP, probably running through the sheriff's office, because it's still.
I'd ask Chief Perry to see what that would look like.
Everett.
At, chat on Chief Perry to see what that RFP would look like. To see, make sure things are covered in that RFP proper and.
Well, and so it's covering everything.
You know, I'm sorry, this isn't, but I would also like to see it located down by the lantern house if we have to move her. I know it's a study, but it's just like.
Service animals for homeless.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. The most successful program for humans has been on a farm in Colorado where they have to go out and do shovel stalls and do ranch working.
Oh yeah, we got an oil coin there and an oil coin there.
We got helps.
No, you've heard about that place in Colorado where they send a lot of the state.
Sorry. I'm just trying to be funny here.
We're done.
I don't mean disrespect, but I have not heard of it.
Neither. I have with another half.
Yeah, maybe that's, there's a lot of opportunity here.
Well, I think, look, look, it, it could be really easy to fix with an outside management company or Davis, it could be easy.
Could, could be either one, yeah. Well, with the enterprise, it's, makes it a lot easier. We don't.
Yeah, right, that we don't have to worry about general fund dollars.
Right.
But, but if it, if if not, if neither of those options pan out, then, then I think we should look at changing the fight that's under just for the sake of the sheriff's resources.
Well, that's a, no reason we couldn't do that now. We wanted to, to take it off of the sheriff's department and then go, go through the same procedure, whether it's Sean or Todd or whoever.
Right. Unless it's managed like as well as it is. You know, the sheriff's done a phenomenal job with, uh, the folks for the health over there. You know, when they moved the, the nurses and the, they don't ever, yeah, they, that's a contract now. It's been you've said it a hundred times, maybe thousand, it's been the best thing we've done for that.
There, there's a little bit of good news from our vital core group is
Vital Core.
Davis County is looking at contracting medical.
Oh, are they?
And there's no influence, there's nothing but the thought of if they happen to pick up our group, they can share resources.
Yeah, that's a good thing. Will you ask them though on that? See if, if they have something to do with animal services?
Ask Vital Core?
Mm-hmm, yes. You know, it's another, big, big business is always looking to have a a broader spectrum. They kind of. Somebody, you caught you my own child?
Like in the whole country?
No.
That was a long lunch.
That was tied for how was lunch.
Oh. Uh, Roy, he is closed today. Had to go to the Mexican place down there.
Oh, I can't say it in Mexican, but I can say it in Thai.
All right. So would you like me to reach out to Jason and you see, and I'll have to break with, with Chief Perry and, and Jay Chad?
It's been a good discussion here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else, Sheriff?
No.